Championships and like I said, we're hoping for some big stuff in the next two years. Thank you very much.
I'd like to call a meeting to order. Welcome you to beautiful Manalapan High School. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I have to look at the time I come to a different school.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Okay pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act of Chapter 231 Public Laws of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised. Ann's Park Press issue of July 30th, 2014. All municipal clerks of the townships and the boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified and the requirements of the posting of the notices have been met. Mr. Boyce, minutes?
Need a motion?
Need a motion for the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Any comments, discussion? Seeing Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Rassatullah?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, next up is superintendent's report.
Alright, good evening everyone. We have, we are recognizing over 400 students this evening. It's literally the largest single recognition ceremony in the history of the Freehold Regional High School District. And we have, we have quite a bit to celebrate and, and we're proud of all of you, but just a few, few housekeeping rules as, as we move forward. We have six different high schools to, that need to be represented this evening. So please, let's be an attentive audience for everyone. Let's cheer on our, our fellow students in the Freehold Regional High School District because I think you'll see, parents in particular this evening, I think you'll see the wide range of excellence that permeates the school district. So with that said, I'd like to opening, open the evening with Mrs. Durbig and the Howell High School Rebels.
Good evening everyone. It is always an honor and a pleasure to be here for this evening where I must thank the Board of Education for continuing and having this tradition because at Freehold Regional, the kids come first and this is a testament to that commitment from our superintendent and from our Board of Education. So thank you very much. Greatly appreciate it. Also, it is, I do have to tell you, my student said to me today, "Mrs. Durbig, why are you wearing Manalapan colors?" To which I said, "We were all rooting for you and we are all so proud of you for your accomplishment." It is a memory you will have forever. So congratulations gentlemen. This evening, we are recommending our commended students. There were 34,000 commended students out of 1.5 million who took the PSAT and I would like to recognize those students. Please come forward. Joseph Antaki, Kyle D. Gierlamo. I really messed that up. It rolled, "Come on up, come on up, come on up." Thank you. Nicole Francis, Michael Manzone. Michael. Yes, congratulations to you and what you can do is you can be here.
Thank you so much.
We have one. Also, our congratulations also goes out to Howell High School's 2015 AP Scholars with honors. These students have shown outstanding academic achievement with an overall GPA of 3.25 or higher and they have scored a three or higher on at least four advanced placement exams. So congratulations to William Belson, Maggie Freed, Jafar Hassani, Lauren Myers, and Rachel Silverman. We greatly appreciate you coming out this evening. At our next recognition ceremony, we will be recognizing 21 all-shore chorus members at Howell High School. Once again, our chorus had the most acceptances in Monmouth and Ocean County to the all-shore chorus and it is also my pleasure to explain why they are not here this evening. They are diligently practicing not only for our holiday concert on Wednesday evening, but Friday, they will be at the White House. They, so congratulations.
Welcome. I'm Peter Mean, CECA Howell High School. I have a couple athletes I'd like to talk about this evening. I'm not sure if one of them's here. I know for sure one of them is not and that is Monica Servideo in gymnastics. She is competing this evening. Her coach asked me to read this short blurb for you. Monica Servideo is a sophomore in Howell High School and is a second year member of the varsity team. Monica is an exceptionally talented gymnast. She competes with poise and confidence which stems from her strong work ethic and natural talent. Monica had an amazing season from holding the top all-around scorer in the state to winning the Shore Conference All Round Championship. She was also named First Team All-Shore and First Team All-State this season. Monica Servideo, she's not here, but I think we should all give it up for her. Thank you. Is Rebecca Hamilton here? Rebecca wasn't sure if she'd be able to make it. She's a basketball player. She's also, guys be careful, she's a heck of a golfer. Be careful in the spring if you're out there. In soccer, Rebecca Hamilton is a junior at Howell High School and a member of the girls' varsity soccer team. She's a three-year starter and as well as our captain for the season. And next, next year's 2015 season, she'll be the captain again. As Howell's head defensive center back, she led the team to the Central Jersey Group Four Finals. This season Rebecca netted three goals for the Rebels. One is the winning goal against, sorry fellas and ladies, Manalapan in a state sectional round of, of eight. Rebecca has committed to play soccer at Penn State when she graduates. This season Rebecca has earned the honor of being named First Team All-Shore. Once again Rebecca Hamilton.
Thank you and we wish you all a very happy holiday season. May it last throughout the entire year.
So, one, one final addition to the recognition for the Howell High School Rebels and, and the Chief Rebel, and I put that in quotes and mean that, Mrs. Durbig, this is her final Board of Education meeting. She's retiring as the principal of Howell High School effective December 31st. She, for those of you who know her in the district, she's a well-known entity across the district, spent years as an administrator at Marlborough High School as well and has added tremendous value to this school district for a very long time and always puts kids first. So Mrs. Durbig, all the best. We also, the, the, Mr. Gatto, who is the mayor of Howell, is on his way momentarily with a proclamation for Ms. Durbig, so the, the fun will continue to, to roll, Ms. Durbig. I now like to call up Mrs. Higley and Freehold Township High School for recognition.
Again, congratulations to all the scholars and athletes being honored here this evening. It's a very proud evening for the, for all the schools. We've had many championships in the district, so we have high quality in athletics and we have excellent high quality in our academics. First of all, I'd like to call up my National Merit Commended Students. We have a few here, but I'm going to call all their names. Craig Chickis, Michael Goldberg, I know Michael's here. Michael Harata, Elizabeth San, Brian Shiskowski, and Brian E. Smith. Again, as Ms. Durbig said, AP Scholars, those who've had a four above on four or more AP. We have Sophia Chang, Shay Lee De Pasquale, Justine Nugent, Justin Tang, and Kristen Tannen. I know two of the students are here. We also have two more students who have gone further. Neither one could be here, but I want to recommend, recognize them. There are National Merit Scholarship semifinals who are continuing the competition, Mark Rinder and Justine Nugent and they're excellent going on, so. I also have two students from the band who have made All-State Orchestra, which is very different. We have Shore Conference, you have Region, then you have All-State. These two are Evan Lewis in the mallets and Dominic Scagliat in the clarinet. And just this past weekend, we had six students from the band make All-State Regions who'll be recognized at the next meeting, so we're moving on. Next, I have Jake Koning, who I'd like to bring up. Jake, do you think he's here? Especially this time of year, we have students throughout all the six high schools that do things for other people. Jake's done something very unique. He started a club, SHH, Students Helping Honduras, which builds homes for needy children in Honduras and he has actually flown to Honduras three times to volunteer his time and to help build homes for people there. So I'd like to congratulate for his humanitarian effort. Next, I'd like to call up Coach Todd Briggs for our boys' soccer team who were the Shore Conference Tournament Champions this year.
I'd like to start off by thanking the following group of people for their support throughout the fall season. Of course, the Board of Education, the district administrative staff, Ms. Higley and Mr. McAvoy and the parents of the players. I'd also like to send a special congratulations to Coach Nattoli and the Manalapan Boys Soccer Team for all their hard work and success throughout this season. For the past two years, you guys have been the team to beat and have accomplished so many things, so congratulations once again. At this point, I'd like to call up the players of our Shore Conference Tournament, excuse me, winning team from this past season. Kyle Finn, Hadi Raufi, Jake Koning, Kyle Traynor, Andrew DiBella, Chris Kulik, you guys can come up. Adrian Barajas, Sean O'Donnell, Mark Fasano, Nick Fasendo, Ryan Morrison, Jake Kennis, Mike Maltese, Mike Christina, Jason Zykowski, Kyle Zykowski, Chris Cardase, Chase Berkowitz, Derek Amoa Kusi, Tim O'Donnell, Mike Stoklinski, Nick Lazzowski, Anthony Orico, Chris Anello, Brian Shiskowski, and Chris Hoskins. Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to call up Ms. Cara Gardner. Our girls, our girls' field hockey team has been Central Jersey Group Four State Sectional Champions for three out of the past four years. So I'd like to congratulate.
Okay, at first I would like to thank again the Board of Education, Ms. Higley, our parents, and my assistants Christina Pankowski and Nicole Illuzzi for their constant support throughout this season. A field hockey season definitely to remember. The team has put the time and dedication in since August 15th to make these accomplishments happen. A 15, three, and four record, advancing to the semifinals of the Shore Conference Tournament for the first time in school history and also a Central Jersey Group Four State Championship. These accomplishments would not have been possible without each girl doing their part on and off the field. A team that never quit, never gave up, never lost hope, bounced back, and worked harder when we needed it the most. Even though the overall success was a team's success, many individual girls also received honors. Michaela Pack was named the First Team All-Shore along, along with Megan Callahan, Jess Petracottella, Kelly Hennessy, and Callie Williams who made Second Team All-Shore. There are not enough words and thoughts to explain how I feel about this team. A season led by seven senior captains who I'm definitely going to miss. Thank you for a great season and all the memories. So as I call your name, please come up. Megan Callahan, Stephanie Blair, Shannon Sistero, Kayla Geller, Claudia Sliwa, Samantha Verga, Michaela Pack, Jess Petracottella, Marie Petracottella, Sarah O'Malley, Kelly Hennessy, Mia Lombardi, Darlene Benjamin, Liz Billings, Reagan Dunn, Renata Bowdy, Emily Zuccarelli, Callie Williams, Jess Applegate, Brittany Tomatsrowich, and Madison Hoskins.
Thank you.
I see Deputy Mayor Nacastro, Councilmember Mr. Walsh. I'd like to call the gentleman to the podium from Howell.
I want to thank you for allowing us to be part of this presentation. Today is a special day, part of not only the kids receiving these recognitions, but for Howell Township, we are reluctantly saying goodbye to our principal, Ms. Durbig. And we really felt from the governing body, because we usually don't get out too much from our chambers to do this, so we do appreciate that. But we wanted to really recognize, pay tribute, and respect and honor somebody who meant so much to our community, not only the school community, but to Howell Township. And with that, we wanted to come here and present a proclamation to Ms. Durbig. She's played such an instrumental role in our community with our kids, fostering them to the fine adults that they become. So with that, I'm going to ask Councilman Walsh to read the proclamation and again, thank you for allowing this.
You aren't getting off that easy. To Manalapan's football team, I graduated in 76. We've been talking about you ever since. Thank you very much for bringing it on. Now before I lead this, I'd just like to say on a personal note, you know, I don't need a microphone. You know, I've been in Howell for a while, always raised in Manalapan since 1965. I'm a product of the Freehold Regional High School District as well as many of my friends. You know, years ago, we had a, we had a very top-of-the-list principal in Howell Township, Barbara McMorrow. When she was leaving, a lot of the people in town were a little bit concerned, like they always are, when a leader in your community is no longer going to be there. But everybody said, "Let's see how it works out." Well, it worked out beyond our wildest dreams. One of the crown jewels of Howell Township was with us for many, many years guiding our children, Ms. Durbig, and I couldn't have asked for more. I had a daughter that went to Colts Neck and we know how our system works. She was grandfathered, my middle daughter, she could have went to Colts Neck too. And nothing against Colts Neck, but I used to tell people I bribed my daughter $10,000 to go to Howell to be with Ms. Durbig. But the truth of the matter is I didn't bribe her. I had taken her many places, wherever we went, whether it was at a play, whether it was at a football game, whether it was at a girls' basketball game, any, any event having to do with the, the children in the school. She was always there cheering them on, trying to bring her on to the greater achievements of the future. And I just wanted my daughter around somebody like that. I just left her at home. She had made arrangements to go out tonight. I wanted her to come with me. She's home from Delaware. She's graduating with a double major and going to med school and she's a product of Howell High School. You know, I could never say enough of the 10 years that I've been in government in Howell Township, being involved with Zina and watching what she does with her staff and all the young people of Howell Township. We couldn't have asked for more. I believe that God blessed us, sending us to her, and we will be forever grateful for what she's taught, not just the children in our town, but the parents. Ms. Durbig, thank you very much. And by the way, I went to school with Ms. Higley too. From the Howell governing body, whereas Ms. Zina Durbig has announced her retirement from the position of principal of Howell High School, which has held a great enthusiasm and dedication since 2003. Whereas being a high, high school principal is a calling that requires a wide range of knowledge and tremendous responsibility. Whereas just a few of Mr. Durbig's many tasks as principal of Howell High School include monitoring and evaluating the entire instructional program, oversight of all student activities, athletic programs and special events, creating and administering the school budget, supporting professional development of all staff members, and serving as liaison between the school and the community. Whereas during her journey from English teacher to high school principal, Ms. Durbig has accrued many notable accomplishments, including serving on the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, responsible for an award-winning gifted and talented program, author of numerous English curriculum offerings, winner of the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association Visionary Principal of the Year, and National Association of Secondary School Principals' MetLife Principal of the Year for New Jersey. Whereas proof of the positive effect Mrs. Durbig has had on Howell High School shows through the accomplishments in the students themselves who excel in academic sports and the arts. Many go on to study at Ivy League schools. Now therefore, I, the governing body, because I'm not the one who signed this, it'd be worth more if I did, mayor of the township of Howell on behalf of the Township Council, do hereby recognize Howell High School Principal, Ms. Zina Durbig, for her years of dedication to the youth of Howell Township and wish her the very best as she begins a new chapter in her life. God bless her.
Now I'd like to call up representatives from Colts Neck High School?
Don't worry, I know what's going on. Good evening everyone. I'd like to extend our congratulations as well to my colleague, Mrs. Durbig. The short time that I've had an opportunity to work with her, it's certainly been a pleasure and I will, I, I don't envy the individual who's going to have to fill those shoes. Those are some pretty big and flowing shoes, so just, I just want, want to congratulate you, Zina. We have a couple of, a couple of academic recognitions that we wanted to call attention to tonight and then we have a couple of athletic recognition that we are extremely proud of at Colts Neck High School. So I do want to start with recognizing our AP Scholars. There are three different classifications of AP Scholars. I'm sure you have probably had the opportunity to hear much of that this evening, but I did want to recognize that at Colts Neck High School, we had 25 students, excuse me, granted AP Scholars with honors, which is granted to students receiving an average of at least 3.25 on all AP exams and scores of three or higher on four or more. Eight current juniors in 17 class from 2014 were recognized there. We also had AP Scholars with distinction, which are granted to students with an average score of at least three and a half on all AP exams and scores of three or higher on five or more of those exams. There were 71 students at Colts Neck High School that earned that this past year, 70 from the graduating class, but one current senior at the time of junior last year, I'm not sure if she confirmed if she's here tonight, but I'm going to call her anyway. She is here, excellent. So I would like to recognize our current senior, a class of 2015, Lauren Piccolini, AP Scholar with Distinction. And I'm also certain that much has been spoken of this evening already about National Merit and I did want to recognize our National Merit Commended Scholar from the class of 2015, Emily Chang. This next group is a relatively large group to be recognized, but they certainly are not to be outdone by the academic or the athletic recognition. They are kind of a conglomeration of all of that and more. As you know, Colts Neck High School houses the ROTC program for the district. They are an outstanding group that continues to win accolade after accolade. Tonight, one of those is going to be recognized as our NJROTC orienteering team is the champion of Area 4, which is approximately seven or eight states in the region. They have qualified for national-level competition on that. It's one of several Area 4 championships that the ROTC has been recognized for. But I am going to, at this point, introduce their coach, Master Chief Petty Officer David Loring, who is going to introduce the crew to you. So, Master Chief, come on up.
Good evening, I'm Master Chief Loring, and with the Colts Neck orienteering team in the back there. And the backbone of the team, the captain, Louis Rondanella, co-captain, Don Vizo, and a senior in the team, Kyle Cannon. We're going to help introduce the entire team that helped win Area 4 championship, 45 members. I'm going to pass it.
Louis Rondanella, Zach Alanya, William Barrett, Colton Bog, Jack Monjovi, Brandon Boyle, Jeremy Brown, Kyle Cannon, Alyssa Caulfield, Brian Chahansky, Jake Jason, James Clark, Troy Agar, Daniel Ellis, Kaitlin Fennel.
Alex Finn, Kyle Flanagan, Emily Fluck, Alex Geisler, Matt Greco, Shane Hadley, Michael Heck, Grace Hugel, Dominic Izzo, Jason Kaufman, Owen Koosh, Karen King, Peyton Carroll, Alyssa Lazarus, Christian Magliaro.
Amy McGee, Colleen McGovern, Patrick Morris, Ariana Mascara, Louis Pragola, Jacob Polin, Noah Polin, Nicholas Rondanella, Daniel Sanfilippo, Nick Sanfilippo, John Schaefer, Kristen Shandall, Lorenzo Testa, Michael Wagner, and Jack Semelmicki.
The Area 4 championship, number one, it earned this team, or 10 members of the team, top 10 members, to go out to California, which will be going out five days in February, when it's nice and cold here, we'll go out for a five-day break, and hopefully we do very well there, I know we will. Area 4 covers from Massachusetts down to about Delaware and out to Pennsylvania. And it's about 24 schools, so there's a lot of people, a lot of cadets, a lot of competition. They all did great, and hopefully the next few years will do even better.
I'm pretty sure that at the next recognition, there will be a couple of more Area 4 championships that we'll be recognizing them for. So again, outstanding program, outstanding job by Master Chief Loring, Master Chief Duncan, and our Major Penzac, who is the head of the program. I'm now going to turn the program over to our Supervisor Extracurricular Activities, Mr. Rick Orneo. But before I do, these next two groups are obviously very special, not just because of their status as Central Jersey Group III State Champions, but because they are just a joy to be around and just an absolute pleasure to be able to go and root and support. And I think I spent a good couple of weeks tweeting at least four or five times a day about them all. So this is a very exciting and a very worthwhile and very well-deserved recognition for these next two groups. So, Mr. Orneo, they're all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. I would first like to thank the Board of Education for giving us an opportunity to recognize these scholastic achievements tonight. I would like to congratulate the administration of all the other schools and the honorees. You should all be very proud of what you've accomplished. Tonight, I will begin by introducing the coach to our boys' cross-country team. From the start of the season, Coach Jim Schlitz had a quiet confidence about his roster. He felt early on they had to make up to potentially make a state run. His hunch was spot-on to introduce the boys' cross-country Central Jersey Group III Champions as Shore Conference Coach of the Year for cross-country, coaches Jim Schlitz.
We had a really, really young team this year, very exciting. We had no seniors. We didn't have a single senior on the team. We weren't sure how we would do, and they just performed better and better each meet. We are second in Monmouth County, second in the Shore Conference. We won Central Jersey Championship, sorry, Central Jersey Group III Championship, and we hope that's just the start to one or two more great seasons. I'm going to call the kids up. Zach Sipke, sorry, he was third-team All-State Group III and second-team All-Shore. Jordan Brandon was third-team All-State Group III and third-team All-Shore. Brad Dantano was third-team All-Shore. And then we had... The last two were just sophomores. And then we had Andrew and Bessie, Alex Meegerly, Kevin Berry, and a freshman, Liam Hoagland. The final race, they were fifth in the Group III State Championships, and like I said, we're hoping for some big stuff in the next two years. Thank you very much.
The second group of athletes we would like to recognize is the Colts Neck Girls Soccer Team. What a pleasure it was to watch this group in action. They were talented, tough, hard-working, played with confidence and with the right attitude, a reflection of their coach, Shore Conference Coach of the Year for Girls Soccer, Doug Phillips.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight, and congratulations to all the students that got an award, all the advisors, all the coaches. It's nice to be Coach of the Year, but that always goes with having a good season, so I'm sure there's plenty of coaches that wish they were here tonight that worked just as hard as I did, and I think they deserve to be recognized, too. This team was amazing this year. We won the Central Jersey Group III State Championship, the second one in school history. We made the Shore Conference Finals for the first time in school history, and we made the State Group III Finals for the second time in school history. We finished the season in the Asbury Park Press Rank Number One Team in the Shore Conference and MSG Varsity All-State Number Nine. A couple of individual awards. We had a freshman, Kayla Lee, make second-team All-Shore, the only freshman that made All-Shore this year in the entire Shore Conference. Junior Bridget King made second-team All-Shore and made All-State Group III. Junior Ally Russo made second-team All-Shore, All-State Group III, and honorable mention on MSG Varsity All-States team. Amanda Visco made honorable mention on MSG Varsity and made first-team All-Shore. And this is kind of a long list, but sophomore Frankie Tagliaferry made first-team All-Shore, Asbury Park Press Player of the Year, Star Ledger, NewJersey.com, second-team All-State All Groups. And I just found out late last week, she's also made the pool for the USA Today Gatorade New Jersey State Player of the Year. So I'm going to call up the girls, but as I'm sure most coaches know, you don't have a team like this without great captains, so I do want to recognize our captains first, and that's Senior Erica Kesselman. Erica is going to be leaving us to play Division One Lacrosse at Ohio State next year. And our other senior captain, four-year starter Haley Curtis. And then I'm just going to call up the rest of the girls, in no particular order. Rebecca Egan, Alexandra Largie, Eva Cutler, Morgan Christman, Noel Conforti, Cara Camarco, Kristen Gamardella, Ally Ryan, Tara Walenchek, Nicole Lowly, Alyssa Caulfield, Kayla Lee, Bridget King, Allison Russo, Amanda Visco, and Frankie Tagliaferry. Thanks again, everybody.
That concludes the Colts Neck Awards for tonight.
I'd like to take a moment. One of the most thankless jobs, Mr. Acetola, stay here for a moment, please. One of the most thankless jobs that I think anybody could wish for is when you run for the Board of Education. This is Mr. Acetola's last board member, board meeting as a board member. We've had a three-year run together. Three and a half, you're right, because they changed the law, you're right. And I can tell you that Mr. Acetola is an invaluable member of the team behind the scenes, helping to guide the decisions of the district. So we just want to present him, and it just says, "And grateful appreciation for your outstanding dedication and service in the Frehold Regional Community," and thank Mr. Acetola for his service.
I just wanted to thank everybody for giving me this opportunity to serve on the Board of Education. Thank you, everyone.
I'd now like to call up representatives from Frehold High School.
Good evening, everyone. I am genuinely impressed by the accomplishments of the young people that we are honoring this evening. It's no small feat for them to be able to, for you guys to be able to, balance the rigorous demands in the classroom, on the field, and in the concert halls. So I would like to begin in conjunction with the Board of Education, Superintendent Mr. Sampson, and the other administrators that are here tonight, by recognizing the accomplishments of our National Merit semifinalists this evening. Michael Gao, Ellen Wu, Lisa Gu, and Anish, Anisha Yermin. Yermin, excuse me. We have 16 National Merit Commended students. Shannon Chung, Maisy Chung, Jerome Derulaka, Nicola Florenda, Brendan Goldberg, Ranook Carmarker, Joseph Kirsch, Rachida Kathari, Ryan McKenzie, Gabriella McCree, Neshat Misor, Jonathan Schneck, and Luke Tortora. We have 21 AP Scholars with Distinction. As you know, the district has had a tremendous push or a very firm concentration, concerted effort, to increase the number of individuals that are participating in advanced placement courses. And it really speaks to the opportunities that the district is providing our students. So both as an administrator and a parent within the district, I am extremely proud of these young people who have set to task and then also achieved at this high level. I have Michael Belmont, Shannon Chung, Jerome Darulak, Michael Gao, Leonard Geisel, Lisa Gu, Rachida Kathari, Jonathan Lermon, Neshat Misor, Siddhartha Oryuganti, Jonathan Schneck, Ilse Sefi, Chadia Shaw, Raul Singh, Ratul Tijrawali, Luke Tortora, Thomas Rayback, Ellen Wu, Anisha Yermin, Yermin, excuse me. We also have six National AP Scholars. We have Michael Gu, excuse me, Michael Gao, Leonard Glisel, Rachida Kathari, and Jonathan Lermon, as well as Ellen Wu. I'll now turn the podium over to Mrs. Acevedo, who will introduce our Athletic Recognition honorees.
Congratulations again to all of the AP Scholars, to all of the athletes, coaches, and especially the parents for your hard work and your dedication throughout the years. I would first like to acknowledge our All-Shore chorus. Mr. Gross was not able to make it tonight, but he has the following statement to make about these three All-Shore chorus students. The following three students successfully auditioned for and were admitted into the New Jersey All-Shore chorus. All three of these students participate in various vocal groups in and out of school, and their hard work and dedication have paid off. They will be performing in the All-Shore Concert in February with many other students from the Shore Region. Congratulations to Claudia Gruber, Hakim Holmes, and Ethan Greenberg. I'd now like to bring up Head Coach Kelly Craig.
Thank you. We had a great Frehold Borough Field Hockey Year this year. One particular senior, Lily Raftopoulos, was awarded first-team All-Shore. She helped us as a sweeper. She helped us have an undefeated regular season, leaving us with just three goals past us all regular season long. Thank you so much.
Lastly, I'd like to recognize Lindsay Curcio. She could not make it tonight. According to Coach Elise Ingwi, Lindsay has been a four-year starter who has dominated since day one. She was named the captain of this year's team and was a key component to the team's success, winning our division for the past four years, which includes an A-North Division title this year. She has scored 12 She has scored 12 goals and seven assists in her career as center back. She was also named to First Team All-District, First Team All-Division, First Team Allshore. Her character speaks for itself, being chosen as News 12 Scholar-Athlete of the Week and the SSOA John Cobb Senior Excellence Award recipient. So congratulations to Lindsay. Lastly, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Durbick. You have been, you know, I've been in the district for the past 16 years, and you have definitely been a staple in that school and a role model for all the females that are aspiring to be in administration. So thank you very much.
Ms. Durbick, you're my role model, too, don't you worry. Just one note for the parents in the audience. The AP Scholars who are being recognized, I think it's important to note for the school district's perspective, there's something that the College Board puts out called the AP Honor Roll. And it's an honor that you can achieve each year as a school district if you are increasing access as well as maintaining your scores. And it's been in existence for five years. There are only four districts in the state of New Jersey that have made that list, four out of those five years, and the Freehold Regional High School District is one of those four districts. And I have to note that the one year we didn't make it, it was by one student for the percentile. We actually challenged it, and they did not accept challenges. So we were that close to being all five years. I'd now like to call up Mr. Boylan and Marlborough High School.
Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking the Board of Education, as well as Mr. Sampson, for affording us this evening to recognize our students here in the district. It's always one of my favorite nights, and I'm always amazed at the accomplishments of the students here in our district. I also would like to thank Ms. Durbick, who I had the pleasure of working with at Marlborough High School as a SICA, and I believe an assistant principal. Now, not an assistant principal, you were gone at that point, but she's always been in my heart and in my thoughts all the time, and she's always been there to help me out throughout my career here in the district. So thank you, Zena, for all your help. Before I introduce Ms. Jeanette Bruno, my assistant principal, to help recognize my wonderful students at Marlborough High School, I'd also like to thank our board member, Mr. Carl Acetola, for all the support that you've given me in the district in your time here. You've been a very special person to me, so thank you very much. And at this time, I'd like to introduce once again my assistant principal, Jeanette Bruno, to help recognize the students of Marlborough High School. Congratulations, and have a wonderful, happy holiday. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Boylan. On behalf of the administration at Marlborough High School, I want to congratulate the parents, because without you, we would not be here this evening. So congratulations to all the parents in the room. I'd like to begin from Marlborough High School to recognize the 14 commended students for the 2015 National Merit Program. I'd like to invite up Ms. Rachel Chu, Ms. Jennifer Chow, Ms. Tracy Dong, Ms. Gloria Epstein. Please come forward. Ernest Kim, Diana Lee, Brandon Lipnitsky, Kevin Liu, Kathleen McPolan, Victoria Medelkin, Arunaba Sarma, Matthew Sherman, David Valenchek, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, Sidney Again, your National Merit commended students from Marlborough High School. On the topic of academic achievement, I would now like to introduce to you our eight AP Scholars with Distinction. A reminder that this is granted to students who received an average score of 3.5 on all AP exams taken, scores of three or higher on five or more exams. I'd like to invite up for recognition, Ms. Rachel Chu, Tracy Dong, Gloria Epstein, Brandon Hanley, Randy Lau, Kevin Liu, Arun Sarma, and Matthew Schneider. One more non-athletic recognition, I'd like to invite up Mr. Joseph Vitale. As he walks to the front, you'll notice the uniform he sports. He is an Eagle Scout, and back in 2007, Joe began his Eagle Scout project. He fundraised more than $11,000. He put in more than 32,000 service hours to build a school for the impoverished Guatemalan Little do they know, Joe. What brings Joe in front of you this evening is not for his Eagle Service Project, which by and far is clearly an accomplishment. He was, most recently, honored by the King of Saudi Arabia. He and only 12 others in the entire world were chosen by the King, invited by himself over to Saudi Arabia in order to receive what is the equivalent of the Nobel Peace Prize in scouting. I introduce to you Joe Vitale, a messenger of peace. I'd now like to introduce to you Coach Ryden and our cheerleading squad.
Or just one of them? Yeah, just one. I'm here to recognize one of our seniors. She has been a four-time senior cheerleader for Marlborough High School. She's a two-time All-American. She also implemented the Sparkle Effect Cheerleading Team at Marlborough High School, which allows an inclusive cheerleading team. She co-ran it with one of the other seniors, and it takes on a couple cheerleaders with our normal developing cheerleaders, and they cheer at some of the games, and they do other inclusive events at the school. This year, she has been awarded the All-State American.
Congratulations. I next like to invite up Ms. Grace Cunningham. Grace is a junior captain for our girls volleyball team at Marlborough High School, and she is a standout district and state volleyball player. She was named the Star Ledger Player of the Year for the Shore Conference. She is First Team All-State for Group Four, First Team Allshore with a handy picture in the paper this past weekend, as well as being named to the top 10 in the state with, and this is truly a volleyball term, kills at 277. So congratulations to Grace. On behalf of Marlborough High School, thank you very much.
Is there anybody left? I was being sarcastic, folks. I'd like to call Dr. Angelozzi to the podium.
Okay, I did request earlier today, so I'm sorry, Manalapan High School students and parents, I requested earlier today that we go last, because we've got a lot of names to call, similar to a small graduation, I think. So hanker in. For those of you that stayed here today, thank you very much for staying through the entire ceremony, it's greatly appreciated. I want to thank the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Sampson, and the rest of the Central Office Administration for supporting events like this, where our students are recognized for their accomplishments, both in and out of the classroom. Additionally, I do have to say Ms. Durbick looks great in red tonight. And I would like to say, over my six years in district, and most recently as a principal, Ms. Durbick has always been a phone call away, and it is greatly, greatly appreciated. Thank you, Ms. Durbick. I'm gonna start on the academic side. Based on their PSAT scores, approximately 34,000 students out of a pool of 1.5 million are recognized for their academic talent as commended students in the 2015 National Merit Program. That's the top 2.3% nationally. Manalapan High School students recognized for that honor, and you're just gonna come on down when I call you, Radica Chinney, Josh Chung, Caitlin Elsewig, Megan Gee, Erin Glanzer, Jason Itner, Yakaterina Kaladian, Katie, Adrian Lay, Brandon Quinlan, Kevin Rittenbach, Dr. Ross has to take a picture, she's as bad as my grandma. And Grandma doesn't know how to use the camera. I'll just start talking about the next one. Next, we're going to go down the road of AP Scholars with Distinction. Those students scored at least a 3.5 on all AP exams taken, an average score of 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. As Mr. Simon mentioned, to be an AP Scholar with Distinction going into your senior year is quite an accomplishment, and we've got a good amount here, I'm not sure of the exact number. I'm going to also call those students down at once. Tarang Bimnathwala, James Burke, Kimberly Charin, Abmanu Cheldry, Thomas Colen, Jason Itner, John Klitch, Brandon Quinlan, Kevin Rittenbach, Christopher Sanzi, Dan Shepsis, Naomi Siegel, Garav Singh, and Brian Wong. There's a couple that I'm missing, because I'm going to ask them to stand next to the podium. Could I please have Rishi Bomasani and Richard Zhu come down? They're also AP Scholars with Distinction, but you gotta stand right here for a minute. Rishi, right here, you stand here for a second. Rishi Bomasani additionally attended the Tomodachi Toshiba Science and Technology Leadership Academy in Japan this past summer. He was recognized for an essay contest that he won. It is a cross-cultural science and technology, engineering, mathematics, exchange, and leadership program for 16 high school students and eight teachers from Japan and the United States. You were there for two weeks? He was there for two weeks this past summer, a tremendous accomplishment. Nice job, Rishi. Richard Zhu, Richard Zhu, you have to come over here. Come on over here. I know you already got a medal, but you also have to stand here for this one. Richard Zhu took, and I'm gonna explain this second place, which is amazing, he took second place in the PICO CTF Computer Security Competition. It's a security game where students are encouraged, and this is all in the news right now, there's a big storyline and a unique problem, where they're encouraged to reverse engineer, break, hack, decrypt, or do whatever it takes to solve the challenge. They start the challenge in the morning around 10 o'clock, and that's when all the teams can start, and teams can consist of one to five students. Richard is up here alone, because he was a one-man wrecking crew in this competition. He was not able to start at 10:00 a.m. because he was interviewing with MIT. He took second place in the competition. The first-place team of four students finished two hours ahead of him. Richard started seven hours late. There were 3,200 teams in the competition, and the third-place team of five students finished a day behind Richard. We also have three National AP Scholars. These students scored an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more AP exams. They're not done their senior year yet. Both of these students have been called down already, but you can still walk down again and shake hands. Radica Chinney and Yakaterina Kaladian. Additionally, A.J. Glanzer, you need to walk down as well, please. Oh, they haven't been called down yet. Oh, Radica, that's good. Good nice shot. They're gonna have a lot of hardware at graduation. A.J., right here. Also, A.J., this past summer did attend the New Jersey's Governor's School in Engineering at Rutgers University. This is a highly selective program, where they spend two weeks at Rutgers University, four weeks, four weeks, four weeks, that's a lot longer, of not going to the beach, which would have been very upsetting to me. Very selective, and they worked on a research project, and at the end of the four weeks, they present that at a symposium in front of about 500 students, scholars, teachers, college professors. So that's a huge amount of time he gave up over his summer for his academic studies. Julia Farhat, come on down, right in the front row. Julia is not only a recognized student leader at Manalapan High School, but she is also a local, state, and national leader in the Family Leader and Community Leaders of America. That's FCCLA. I never remember what that stands for. It's a national career and technical student organization that provides leadership development and career preparation opportunities for students. Julia is currently the active vice president of national programs for New Jersey FCCLA. Julia is currently the active vice president of national programs for New Jersey FCCLA. She's an active member of Nordstrom's BP Fashion Board. Recently, Julia attended the FCCLA National Leadership Conference in San Antonio, Texas. And this past October, she attended the FCCLA Capital Leadership Academy in Washington, D.C., where she met with congressional and senatorial representatives about career and technical education and Perkins funding. And I think we've got a couple of sports teams here that did pretty well this past fall season. So I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Hein, our supervisor of extracurricular activities.
Thank you, Dr. Angelosi. I think if you could harness the athletic ability intellect in this auditorium, probably could power a small city. It's really impressive to standard before all of you. I'd also like to take a moment and thank Mrs. Durbig. Mrs. Durbig was my principal at Howell High School for the last 10 years, and she gave me a lot of guidance and encouragement over the years. Mrs. Durbig, you know I'll always bleed blue and gray, because I was a Howell boy, born and raised, but I have to be honest, it's been a lot of fun here this past year. I've been here 12 weeks, we won two state championships. Is it always this easy? I don't know. I went through the records. Manalapan was built in 1971, 43 years. In those 43 years, we had never won a state football championship until this year. Congratulations. I also, as I kind of dug through those records, realized that over the past 43 years, we've won 22 state championships. Never have we won two in the same season. Of course, that changed this year with the boys soccer team winning a state sectional championship. Without stealing too much thunder from my coaches, I just want to congratulate recently-named APP Boys Soccer Player of the Year. That goes to Ryan Hammer. Ryan, congratulations. It was a lot of fun to watch the soccer team play this year. They fought very hard throughout the course of the season, they did an excellent job. They made it all the way, all the way to the semifinal Group Four championship game, playing against an excellent team in Washington Township, preseason ranked number 10 in the nation. They took that team all the way to a double overtime period, where they eventually lost, but regardless, fought an excellent game, and I was really impressed by them throughout the course of the season. At this point, I'd like to bring Coach Natoli up, so he can introduce the boys on the state championship soccer team.
All right, good evening. Thank you for everybody who stayed the term tonight. I want to thank everybody, especially our building administration, Dr. Angelosi, and especially our seeker, Mr. Hein, for giving us the opportunity to recognize these great student athletes who put time and time each day and each week through the season to represent well. I also want to thank my assistant coaches, my parents, and especially all the players who worked so hard this year. This year, we ended up, for the second straight year, Class A North Champions, number five in the state, and of course, Central Jersey Group Four Champions. All right, I'd like to call up the guys. I'll start with the seniors, Drew Brenley, David Buckman, Mike Kavanaugh, First Team Allshore, and Player of the Year, Ryan Hammer, G.J. Lockhart, Robbie Prattka, Justin Tur, who was First Team All-Division Goalkeeper, Jordan Vance, the Second Team Allshore Member, Adam Weisberger, Eric Wilkinson, Joseph An, Tom Colen, Canaan Kazar, First Team Allshore Member, Mike McNicholas, Ayush Matal, Daniel Natoli, Tiago Reyes, Pio Shiano Lamariello, Miles Schindler, Mitchell Volus, Ricky Baptista, Andrew Camito, Matt DiLorenzo, Pete Evangelista, Cole Whitehead, Dylan Williams, Rocky Garrettson, Connor O'Neil, Jason Popwitz, and Ethan Shalom. And Garav Singh, Garav Singh. Definitely a shout-out again to the Free O Township Coach, Coach Briggs, for the nice words early on, and also a nice shout-out to our football team bringing home the state championship this year. Nice job. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we have the boys' state championship, Group Five football team. Had a season for the ages. I'd like to introduce Assistant Coach Dominic Lapori. Coach Ed Guerrero, our head coach couldn't be here tonight. He's out fighting for his boys to get on the Super 100 Football Team, so they're kind of arguing who should be included in the top 100 football players in the state, and then he's fighting for a couple of kids to get on that team right now. So, without further ado, Coach Lapori.
First off, on behalf of Coach Guerrero and the coaching staff and the entire football program, want to thank Mr. Sampson, Central Administration, Board of Education, our own administration, Dr. Angelosi, Dr. Ross, Mrs. Ella Raza, I saw her back there, Mr. Dillon, and of course, our seeker, our first-year seeker, Mr. John Hein, who's done an outstanding job in these couple of months with us, and really appreciating everything he's done over the last couple of months. What I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna read off these 90 names, so bear with me, hold your applause to the end, please. I'll call the boys up. Oh, okay. All right. Okay. All right, you ready? Dan Anarella, Mark Benevento, Simon Boobless, Tom Caballaro, Mike Cagiano, John Chung, Brian Conforth, Mike DeAngelis, Daniel Debner, Phil Eber, Mustafa Farage, Julian Fishman, Tom Flynn, Steven Gito, Mark Goldstein, Noah Groninger, Drew Halasy, Gerard Hodge-Recourt, Andrew Lando, Charles Lombana, Thomas Mastro Giovanni, Imamu Mayfield, Joe Mendez, Kyle Mullin, Tyson Plummer, Ben Sikowsky, Ariel Smertankow, Andrew Sullivan, Nick Suroff, Carlos Tashera, Peter Williams, Julian Allen, Anthony Bassani, Tom Best, David Blumenberg, Vincent Carnesi, Chris Carnesi, Nick Coroli, Michael Chicharelli, Adam Sintron, Nick Critella, Mark Figaroa, Connor Flynn, Sonny Hussein, Gabe Levin, Jake Levine, Joe Lewis, Lee Maximek, Logan Mazzola, Andrew Moy, T.J. Rico, Daniel Park, Riley Redosovich, Christian Rivera, Farage Rizvi, Marcus Salinas, Vinnie Saccelli, Anthony Sharappa, Joseph Sellmeyer, Matthew Strauss, Patrick Swainy, Anthony Toddona, Mitch Trab, Thomas Vasallo, Nick Amrani, Stephen Bullen, Stephen Byrne, Michael Cardnell, Sal Kazazza, Gage Chikakari, Ronnie Gata, Corey Goldstein, LJ Holder, Christian Isabella, Sean Kinnenberg, Justin Obermeyer, John Pimentel, Alec Prussia, Ryan Rafferty, David Ryan, second page, Michael Sellmeyer, Joseph Sicolo, Jake Stoklinski, Michael Taylor, Cody Weiner, and John Yanick. That's your 2014 Group Five State Champions. Just one thing I want to add, Kyle Mullin was the Asbury Park Press Defensive Player of the Year, so that's outstanding accomplishment, Kyle Mullin, who right now is on his visit at the University of Pennsylvania, so outstanding student as well. Thank you.
We would be remiss if we didn't mention that Mike Cagiano is the all-time leading kicker in New Jersey state history. Mike, congratulations. I'd like to get back over to Superintendent Sampson at this point.
Well, thank you, everyone, and a round of applause for everyone, some wonderful accolades this evening. I want to thank the parents for coming out and supporting your children tonight. We do these to honor the diverse accomplishments across the school district, and I want to wish everyone a very happy and healthy holiday season. Thank you. We'll recess for a minute.
Okay, call the meeting back into order. Any other?
No, I'll defer.
Okay, then, the board report would be Finance Committee. Michael?
Yes. Now, basically, we basically got a more detailed explanation of the audit report, which you're now gonna hear.
Sir, you are up.
My name is John Swisher, I'm with Subsequent Company, I'm the manager there. And we recently concluded the audit for the year-end June 30, 2014. I had the pleasure of being with the Finance Committee a week ago, and so, you go over the reports in great detail. I should have received two reports as a result of our audit, the smaller of which is the management report, and the larger is the confidential annual financial report for the CAFRA. I'll start with the management report. The management report is required by the state of New Jersey, and it asks us to report on various areas of these functions, purchasing, payroll, claims, et cetera. It's also the place where you would find any comments or recommendations. And there were two recommendations, I'm gonna read them into the record right now, the first of which is that the district take greater care in establishing budget appropriations on the financial accounting records, and that the internal controls over this process be more closely monitored. Basically, what that means is the actual details of the budget was set up a little incorrectly through clarity errors. The total amount of the appropriations was correct, but there were some adjustments that had to be made, it's just clarity errors were clarified very quickly, and this year should be resolved. The second recommendation is that the district reevaluate the process under which the work papers supporting the application for state school aid, limited English efficiency student accounts be developed. That's your ASSA, that's the document that you develop your state aid through, releasing positive accounts on the LEP students that were put into the report. After discussing this with Sean, I believe we're in good shape going forward for this year. Again, it should not be a problem going forward. The second report, the larger of the two, is the CAFRA. That's where you find all your numbers. Also, whether you'll find the opinion on the financial statements, which completes your report is unmodified, which is the best opinion you can get, basically means that your finance office, your business office is able to produce financial statements that we can audit without material mistake. It's excellent as well. The district ended the year financially on a good note. The surplus is in excellent condition to a point where you recently had an increase in your bond rating, which is an indication, once again, of good financial health, also in terms of the practices of the business office, they also look at that as well. A better bond rate will result in better interest rates throughout the long-term borrowings. That's also a great feather to the cap of the district. I will take any questions you have on either one of the reports right now.
If I could just briefly comment on that. Mr. Swisher and his team, as usual, very professional as they do their work in our office, and as I've said before, that the audit is a historical document to me, and it's certainly something that, aside from being required by statute, I think is a good check for the board and the community, but the real value that I get, some current value, the firm is an excellent resource for me throughout the year, if I just want to bounce some ideas off of John and his group, or check my thinking type of thing, and we went through some fairly complex energy financial scenarios, and John was a great help for that, so I just wanted to thank you for that, John. Also, Trish Smith and the group in the business office does an outstanding job, and I just wanted to acknowledge them as well.
John, on behalf of the board, thank you very much for your excellent work.
No problem. Happy holidays to you.
Two. Okay, next we have public participation. I don't think anyone has signed up, so the Lord said unto Moses, move on. Okay, next we come to personnel.
Can I just make a comment? A couple, just a couple of quick changes to the agenda, J10, there are three names on there where $98 is listed for the workshop, it should be $96 for all three, each of them, so I just wanted to note that. And also, in the job description section, the terms of employment should be modified to read confidential 12-month managerial position, salary, vacation, holidays, and work schedule to be recommended by the superintendent and approved by the Board of Education in accordance with applicable board policy. No other changes, Mr. Moses.
All right, thank you. Mr. Boys? All right, I would like to take the agenda in one shot, that would be G1 through K1. Can we have a motion for it? Carl, second, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Boys?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
So, one note on the agenda, we'd like to extend our best of luck, and Mr. Brothman, stand up for a moment, please. So, with the retirement of Mrs. Durbig, Mr. Brothman, in the interim, will be named the acting principal. As we commence a search later in the spring, we have a number of, we anticipate a number of administrative openings in the district. We trust that Mr. Brothman will be a good steward for that school district. He's been the assistant principal at Howell High School for a number of years, and we have all the confidence in the world that he'll continue to guide that ship well, so congratulations, Jeremy, and good luck.
All right. Old business?
New business.
Yes, new business.
On behalf of the Manalapan Arts Council and the Manalapan's Mayors Charity Ball, I'm happy to announce that we donated $750 to the Manalapan High School. I'm happy to announce that we donated $750 to the Manalapan High School Band. So I thank the township for that. And I wish Carl all the best of luck. I'll miss him sitting next to me.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank Mr. Astola for his hard work and dedication. I know that the district is in a better place now than it was before he came on board, and I'm gonna miss you, Carl. And to Mrs. Derby, I am sure we'll run into each other at a further concert, Grateful Dead concert someplace. I know we'll run into each other.
Grateful Dead.
And Mrs. Derby, from me to you, congratulations. It's a long run, and thank you. And it's been great working with you and working with the board and the administration of Freehold Regional. I come in, I tell a lot of jokes, I call Sean and try to find out, figure out when the meetings are. But with all that said and done, this is one great place, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. Thank you.
Any other new business? Can we have a motion to?
Motion. And one thing, Heshi, let me hit the gavel.
I know.
You got it, Carl.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Carl? Thank you for coming.